Got it.
Yeah, but I called the meeting to order. And roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Vias?
Here.
Mayor Protem McEckern?
Here.
Mayor Cox?
At this time, we have the declaration by the city attorney for closed session items.
Thank you, Mayor Cox.
We have, let me point out that on the agenda is the public comment. There isn't a single soul here, but just so the minutes will show that we did go to the public comment section. We will address that again at the regular meeting, at the end of the regular meeting, but there is no one here. There are no cards to call upon, therefore, there are no public comments. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We have five closed session items this evening, three of which are pertaining to existing litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D1. Those are items A, which is an airport authority matter, and B, which is a city council matter, both pertaining to the SEC versus City of Victorville litigation. The third litigation item is item D on the agenda, which is a city council item. It is Shadowview Corporation versus City of Victorville. The other two items, C and E, are anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D4. Each involves one potential case, and to the extent there is any reportable action, we will report it at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the six o'clock meeting.
Are there any questions or comments from council members? If not, we're going to adjourn at 5:02 into executive session for these items as outlined by the city attorney. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Now, this would be the meeting of the city council of the city of Victorville, and the city council sitting as the library board of trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. At this point in time, we are going to have the invocation and the pledge allegiance. Pastor Ray Jim of the Jubilee Community Church will give the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance by our police chief, Sam LaChia. I ask you to please stand at this time and remain standing through the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we begin this meeting tonight by just acknowledging that you are the one in whom we trust. And we also want to thank you for the many ways in which you've blessed the city we live in. And we ask your blessing on this meeting tonight. Let everything that's done, every decision that's been made, be made according to your will and according to your plan. Just impart to our city leaders wisdom. In Jesus' name, amen.
And I guess I should have had the clerk call the roll call before we ask the city attorney. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy? Councilmember Kennedy?
He's here.
Councilmember Vias?
Here.
Mayor Protem McEckern?
Here.
Mayor Cox?
Here. We were busy talking. We have, we have a closed session before we go into the regular session. And Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We had five closed session items. They are all set forth on the agenda, including the parties related to the litigation, three of which were existing litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6 subsection D1. And again, the names of the parties and the case numbers are set forth. Two of the items were anticipated litigation in accordance with government code 5495-6.9D4. With respect to item E, the anticipated litigation, there is reportable action. The council voted unanimously to terminate two different agreements. One was a disposition development agreement dated August 12, 2004, between the former redevelopment agency and Bazoff Development III. And the second item was the termination of a settlement agreement between Bazoff Development III LLC and the former redevelopment agency. And again, that was unanimous vote to terminate both documents. That is the only reportable action. There's no reportable action with respect to the other items.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. The city clerk present the agenda. And any revisions to the council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there are a couple of revisions. There's been a request by the mayor and councilmember Vias to continue item number two, D2. On written item D6, there is additional information that is on the dais and available to the public regarding the neighborhood stabilization program. And for clarification, at the last meeting on January 21, there was an item, which was D10, regarding purchase agreements for the neighborhood stabilization program. They were scheduled to be on this agenda, but will now be continued to the February 18 meeting. And those are the only revisions that I have.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I'm going to come down front. We have two presentations. First presentation is a proclamation to Monique Stensrud. I hope I pronounced that correctly. And then the second is going to be a presentation by Dana Armstrong after I finish that. So if you would, is Monique here? Normally, before the meeting, I get a, I get a talk to someone. They're not here.
We, we did make contact with their representative, so we were under the impression they'd be here.
Well, I didn't see anyone before the meeting, and no one contacted me. We have the proclamation. Maybe they will be here later. Oh, are you? Okay, is that?
That's a different name than we had, but, but that's, if you're here.
Okay, I'm so sorry. This is the only name that I have. And so you are Linda Nichols? And for the director of the, well, for the Hart Walk? Recognize we're ready for February 7. Okay. Information is there. If you'll come on down and meet me. The audience didn't know what was going on, and we did this to give you the most recognition. No, that's not true. My mix-up, and I'm so sorry. This is the city council presentation for a proclamation recognizing Wear Red Day on February 7, 2014. Heart disease is the number-one killer of women and kills more women than all forms of cancer combined since 1984. More women than men have died each year from heart disease, and the gap between men's and women's survival continues to widen. The American Heart Association's Go Red for Women movement has been impacting the health of women for 10 years by raising the awareness about the importance of heart disease prevention, and as a result, more than 627,000 women's lives have been saved. Wow. In celebration of the 10th birthday of National Wear Red Day, in recognition of the ongoing fighting against heart disease and stroke, I, along with other members of the city council, the city of Victorville, do hereby proclaim Friday, February 7, 2014, to be National Wear Red Day in Victorville, and urge all citizens to show their support for women in the fight against heart disease by wearing the color red. My own, there we go. The same information is contained in this proclamation, and so I grant this to you and congratulate you for being so involved in a worthy cause.
Thank you.
It was not until night till 2004 that the American Heart saw a real need to do more research for women and heart disease, because, believe it or not, one in three women die of heart disease. Only one in 31 women die of breast cancer. And this is something we don't really want to think about, because heart disease is now affecting young people, and so are strokes. So what I really encourage all of you to do is when you get an opportunity, go to our website, americanheart.org, and educate yourself to know, because the symptoms for women having a heart attack are different than men. And those are the feeling of heaviness on your chest, nights of sleeplessness, feeling like some, like you have a backache, nausea, break out into cold sweat. And what's so unfortunate, those are the symptoms for women in menopause. Those are, for so many years, women would go to emergencies, and they would look at their age 45, 50, and say, "Well, you're just an hysterical woman. Go home and take your Prurient and your Prozac. That's all that's wrong with you." But now, more and more women are living longer. It used to be one out of two. Now it's one out of three. And by the year 2020, we are hoping to reduce that by 20%, which we have already reduced heart attacks by 20%. But there's still the issue with stroke. So educating and understanding stroke is a form of heart disease, but it is also a brain attack. So thank you for the recognition for this, and go wear, wear red on Friday.
Thank you for your comments. Is Dana Armstrong going to come up and give her personal show? I will just leave the microphone with you.
Thank you, Mayor Cox, and members of the city council. I'm here tonight to recognize the winners of our Victorville Recycles Week event. This is an annual event held during the first week of November. It's sponsored by the City of Victorville Recycling Program and Bertec Waste Industries. Victorville Recycle Week was started in November of 2007 by Roe Ratliff. I always give her credit. It was her idea. She now works for the Public Works Department, but we kept her idea going. It's intended to increase the awareness of and participation in the city's various recycling programs by getting our local schools involved. Here are some of the highlights from this year's event, which happened the first week of November. We had 10 schools sign up. 702 posters were entered in the poster contest. 101 sculptures were entered in the recycled sculpture contest. 65 in-class presentations were given to about 1,900 students. 11 school-wide assemblies were presented to about 4,400 students. Five schools participated in our cleanup, lending 179 volunteers. 10 schools did our CRV bottle and can contest, and five did the newspaper contest. All told, we estimate that we made contact with about 6,000 students during this year's event. And we estimate that we've reached over 46,000 students since 2007, when this program began. During Victorville Recycles Week, schools participate in activities to earn points. The schools that earn the most points can win cash prizes. In addition, individual students can win prizes for a poster contest and a sculpture contest. The prizes are provided by Bertec Waste Industries, as well as the City of Victorville Recycling Program. At this time, I'd like to invite representatives from Bertec to join me. Sharon Mitchell is the municipal program coordinator, and Stephen Bradshaw is the division manager for Victorville Disposal. Thank you. And then I just want to say a few more words about Bertec. They're our local hauling company. They pick up our recyclables and trash, and Bertec's been a great supporter of this program. And Sharon, I want to give her a lot of credit. She is carrying the load these days in terms of doing the vast majority of the work to organize Victorville Recycles Week and give those 65 in-class presentations and 11 school-wide assemblies. You're very brave, Sharon. And so now, I'd like to announce the winners. We went to start by inviting the winner of the recycled sculpture contest to come forward. That's Jasmine Hernandez. Jasmine, if you and your fam, and your family would like to come up? We, Jasmine?
Here, why don't you, where should we go, Lisa? Position, how about over there? Come on over there, Lisa.
And Jasmine is a fifth grader at Morgan Kincaid School. We had over 100 sculptures in the contest, and Jasmine's winning sculpture is a great griffin made out of a soda bottle and cardboard and other recyclables. It was titled Achieve, Create, and Soar with the Griffins. And Jasmine receives a $100 check for being the winner of the recycled sculpture contest. So here is the check. Great. Congratulations, and we will be displaying the winning sculpture at our Materials Recovery Facility for a year. So congratulations. Great job. All right. Next, I would like to invite Samantha Trito, I hope I'm pronouncing your last name correctly, and her family to come forward. Samantha is the winner of the poster contest. She's a first grader at Brentwood Elementary School, and there were over 700 posters that were submitted, and hers was the very best, we decided. It was a very tough thing to pick the winner out of 700. Her poster stood out because of the great artwork and the message, "I am recycling a bottle." And I think that's something that we all could take to heart and start recycling our bottles and cans and paper as well. It was a great message, and we hope her poster will inspire people throughout the year. It's on display out in the lobby, and we will also display it out at the Materials Recovery Facility during this year. And here is your check for $100. You're going to have to think about what you're going to do with that. Congratulations, and thank you. All right. Good job. Okay. Next, we're going to recognize the winner of the YouTube contest. This was a new thing we did this year. Everybody is on the computer, so we figured we need to get on the computer, too. The win, I'd like to invite representatives from Green Tree East Elementary School to come forward. All right. We had, this year, we had, this was the first year we'd done this contest. We had six entries from three schools, and Green Tree East had the winning video. It was called Recycling Kings, and it was a rap of, as you might expect, because that's the popular music these days. And the, the rap song included the refrain, "Everyone recycle better, and we certainly need that in Victorville." So it was, it was fantastic, and I want to encourage you, go to YouTube and put in the search bar Recycling Kings, and it's the first thing that comes up in the results. So congratulations. And here's a check. It's a $400 check for the school. So, good job.
All right, thank you very much.
And then finally, we want to recognize the first-place school. I want to invite representatives from Morgan Kincaid to come forward. All right, great. And Morgan Kincaid has the distinction of being the first school to be the top points winner two years in a row. It's a dynasty in the making. They did a fantastic job. Their students submitted 213 posters, 56 sculptures. They had 69 participants in our community cleanup. They also made three YouTube videos, three school-wide presentations, six in-class presentations, and a Murph tour. They did the newspaper and CRV contest. They did everything, so they won. And they get their name once again on the perpetual trophy, the Victorville Recycles Week trophy. And so they just did a fantastic job, and they really set the standard for all the other schools. And I know it's going to be tough next year, because Vicki wants that trophy every year. So, and as winners, you get the $1,000 check from Bertec Waste Industries. How about if I give it to here, from Bertec, for being the winner? And congratulations, and thank you so much for your support of this program. It's, it's really a pleasure to work with you. It's so great. The school is so great, and all the schools are just fantastic. So, thank you and congratulations again. Good job. All right, and I'm wrapping up, so that is it. As a final note, I'd like to thank Sharon. As I said, she does the bulk of the work. She did those 65 in-class presentations in about two weeks, and those, those school-wide assemblies. She's a very busy lady during the month of November, and we couldn't have done it without her. And also, thank you to Bertec for their sponsorship. So one final round of applause for our winners. And thank you, and have a good evening. And thank you again, Mayor Cox and council, for giving me the time.
From the city council, thank all of you for participating in this. I think those kids had fun doing this, didn't they? Thank you all. We will now continue on with the city council meeting. Now is the time for appeal hearings, which we do not have any scheduled, but we do have B1, a public hearing. Now, this is to hear arguments for and against. Considering approval of the general plan amendment, DEV-13-0003 as set forth in resolution number 14-004. Madam Clerk, do you need to read the resolution before or after the hearing?
I do not need to read the resolution.
Okay. At this point in time, are there any questions of staff before I open the public hearing?
Mayor Cox?
Yes.
I don't know who would address this, but in the staff report, it indicates that, that what we passed in October of last year was sent to the state. They reviewed and provided comments. Staff revised the housing element to include those comments. I'm just curious, what changed? Because nothing in here tells me what changed.
Mayor, councilmembers, the State Department of Housing and Community Development wanted to ensure that the City of Victorville housing element met all the statutory requirements. And a couple of things, there were, they were mostly minor, but one of the changes were to ensure that we met the transitional housing requirements. And so we addressed that. And there was another portion of the housing element which was required, which the state wanted to ensure that we met, or we described how we progressed on our previous housing element. Those are probably the two largest changes we made, but fairly minor.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. Any further questions from, I don't want to open the public hearing on this matter. I don't believe I have any cards on this matter, but let me check. I do not. No one coming forth to address the council. Close the public hearing. No questions of staff. The chairs for a motion, ready for motion?
Motion by councilmember Kennedy, second by councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
The next item on the city council agenda is the consent calendar, items C1 through C8. If there is a reason to have a discussion or questions on any of the items at the request of any member of the council, we will pull that off. If none are to be pulled off, then one motion will approve all those items.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item 6 for just a very brief comment.
Item C6, item C6 then is, is going to be pulled. We'll take a separate action. Any other requests from councilmembers to pull in the items?
I was going to request C6, too.
Okay. Let's go ahead, and then we can take a motion to approve the consent calendar with exception of C6.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, second by councilmember Garcia.
And now, at the request of two councilmembers, C6, whichever one would like to go first.
Mr. Mayor, I need to abstain from the minutes I wasn't present last week, last meeting.
I'll note that in the record.
But this is the quarterly financial report that I'm looking at for C6.
Yeah. I, the only comment I wanted to make, I think it was very informative. I read the Daily Press article this morning, and I want to compliment the Daily Press for doing what I thought was a very good summarization of what was in that financial report. Very well-balanced and hit all the important stuff.
Yeah, I agree. It was very complete, very extensive. Councilmember Vias, did you have any?
Yes, I just wanted to draw attention to the golf course. It shows that it's slightly, slightly overbudgeted, and I, I have a lot of concerns because of the condition of the golf course. It's receiving a lot of complaints from residents regarding the poor service, the condition of the grass, the grounds. And I would just, I would like to have a staff update regarding that. I guess I should agendize it at the end of the meeting, but, but we are concerned about the golf course.
I can give you just a brief update. I know that there's several staff members, including the assistant city manager, that's meeting with representatives from Billy Casper Golf this Thursday, and we would anticipate bringing an item forward to you after that, depending on the outcome of that meeting.
Okay, all right.
All right. Any further questions or comments? If not, we need a motion and a second to approve item C6.
Motion by councilmember Kennedy, second by councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
We are now on D, written communications, item D1.
Mr. Mayor, just a very brief statement on this. Yesterday, when we met, you indicated that you would be interested if SCAG allows for an alternate, if you'd be interested in being that alternate in case you're in Palm Springs and, for whatever reason, Mayor Protem McEckern can't make it. And I just wanted to remind you of that, and ask that, as the council considers that, that they also consider making that a part of their motion. I have not heard back from SCAG as to whether or not alternates are allowed, but just as a contingency, if they are allowed, you had indicated you would be desirous of doing it.
I indicated that I'm probably going to be in that area anyway, and in such, if I doubt. I indicated that I'm probably going to be in that area anyway and in such if a doubt that Mayor Protem would not be there because we rely on him to attend those, but just in case, I would wanted to know if we could have, be sure to have an alternate. I will be there, I'd be willing to do that if alternates are allowed. I do not even know.
I will check on Thursday because I have my regular meeting. I'm on the regional council, so I don't know that I would be there regardless because of that, so we may be able to have someone else be the delegate. We'll just, city clerk and myself will have to check on that. So if I don't have to be the delegate and you're going to be down there, you're more, I would defer to you to be our delegate because I'm on the regional council representing District 65.
Unless another council member would like to offer services. Then I guess the motion would be, providing that it's approved in the bylaws of SCAG and which we already remember, if the, our delegate is unable to attend, then I, as the alternate, will attend in his place. We would need a motion for the minutes when we check with SCAG on that, providing it's approved. If it's not, that's okay too. We'll need a motion.
So moved. Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Garcia, may I get a vote from you?
So Mayor, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Mayor Protem McEchrin, you are the delegate, but in case you can't attend, we will make sure that we have, we'll try to make sure that we have a delegate there. Item D2, did I understand that that is to be continued?
Yes, that is the request, to continue.
Any objections from the council members to continue this item? Not, it's going to be continued. Item 3 is the continue of adoption of resolutions the City Council change once a month. I did not hold the council, but I understand that, I guess during the summer when we had a lot of vacations and a very slight agenda, at least I was asked if it was okay if we had the one meeting, which it certainly was during Christmas because of holidays and the closure for two weeks, we had a meeting. Probably I should apologize to Mr. Robinson, I didn't take that as a toll, as a poll for a once a month meeting. I have requested that the City Council establish study sessions. Because a lot of our ordinances are so outdated, I can think of immediately such as the NSP program that needs a complete airing and a discussion, a variety of other issues. If we don't have enough items for the agenda, I would request that we continue with two meetings a month and one of them would be a meeting and one would be a study session. I can bet you though, there will be items on both of them, but this is up to the City Council. Comments from the council members?
Mr. Mayor, I've been given this a fair amount of thought and when I was asked informally, casually, what I thought, I thought, well gee, that might be more efficient. I have a couple of concerns. One of them is that democracy is an inefficient system by its very nature. It's not efficient, it probably was never intended to be efficient. That's why framers, when they put together our national model, they gave us all kinds of checks and balances and obstacles. Some decisions end up being pulled through a meat grinder and we all get a little tired of that. But at the same time, having said that, I think some decisions ought to go through a meat grinder. So it's really okay with me if it's a little inefficient. I'm all right with that. And if that means we have to meet twice instead of once, that's okay. The other thing that concerns me, and this is a little different, I, one thing that I think will be inevitable, unavoidable, and probably just a natural outcome of going to one meeting a month, is that more decisions will be made by staff and fewer decisions will be made by council. Now, I know that's nobody's intention and that's not what anybody wants to have happen, but in the interests of efficiency and smooth operation of government, I'm just concerned that that will happen. One of the things I like about city government is it's the purest form of democracy we have. It's the governing body is close to the people we're governing. We live in the same community. I get stopped on the corner in the street in the grocery store and the people complain to all of us anytime they want to. And I think having that closeness is important. And when we start creating distance by less frequent meetings, I think we run the risk of harming that democratic process. So after really giving this a lot of thought, I don't want to go to one meeting a month. I know I would only be here once a month instead of twice a month and it would probably be a time saver for me, but you know, you folks selected us to do this job as well as we can and I think it, I think it needs this and so I'm in favor of staying it too. Sorry for the long winded.
Sorry. Are the council members, do you have any comments?
Well, I definitely agree with Mayor Cox and Councilmember Kennedy. I do think it's very important to stay close to the people and offer that path to us. But I really like the idea of if there's not things for the agenda that we have study sessions, because there's a lot of things on here. For instance, tonight for D2, that I think needs to be thoroughly vetted and the information is just not getting to us. And we need that face time with the staff to really understand the decisions that we're making. And for instance, D2 is a huge decision to make because it's adding positions, high level positions and you know, that comes along with pensions and that's going to be with us for a very, very long time. So decisions like that, high dollar decisions, need to be studied carefully.
Okay. Councilmember Garcia?
Yes, I'm in favor of continuing our two meetings per month for the same reasons that everyone else has explained here. But I also would like for us to have some study sessions, if that would be possible. That's in addition to our meetings.
Good. McEchrin?
Well, I know that we have discussed on numerous occasions, having workshops, study sessions, whatever you want to call them regarding policies or in our municipal code that needs to be updated, several parts of it are, well, they were here when you started as city manager, Mr. Cox, so they haven't been changed since then. I think that it would be appropriate that if we have, if we don't have enough for an agenda, that we put those things on the agenda and get those things done, since we're not that busy right now.
At this point, it's unanimous that this not be adopted. And so, Mr. City Attorney, does the council take an action to deny resolution or?
You need not, you-
Or no action required?
No action required if you're not going to adopt the resolution.
Okay, we're not going to adopt the resolution, as you heard, it's unanimous-
City manager, I think, has a-
I had one question, Mayor Cox, as-
When I temporarily grant the city manager purchasing authority within the budget for purchase up to a higher amount than current has been pulled off. I hope you noticed that, that's been outlined and so that's not a consideration of the council at this time. Mr. Robinson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As we discussed yesterday, one of the difficulties that both city clerk and myself have had over the past few months is requests by city council members to put items on the agenda outside of your adopted policy. So we understand that the once a month meetings is not something that everyone's interested in and we can adopt whatever you need to there. If we just make it an informal, if the agenda's light, we'll try to fill it up with some of the other longer items. Not a problem. But I would like to get some clear direction on what the council would like me to tell a council member or the mayor if he or she contacts the city clerk or myself, asking to put something on the agenda, because it is awkward for us to say, well, no, you can't, we can't put it on the agenda for you, you have to bring it up at the end of the meeting.
I'm glad you brought that up because this is in the last, second page of the memorandum from the mayor that this be addressed. Very early, we had such a change in the council and change in the way we operated. I know all of you read about the financial problems and on it for items, we got tired of it ourselves. We had so many items that we passed a policy indicating that before we just had items added on the agenda without maybe the other council members having any interest, that it come to this council and the council discuss it at the end of the regular meeting and by the approval of the council, it would be agendized. We are now having questions that we only need one meeting a month because we don't have agenda items, but we have council members who have requested to put items on the agenda. And I'm in that same boat. I think we've worked together as a team. I think it's time to rescind that policy. This is the city council's agenda. It's not the staff agenda, the city clerk's agenda, it's not the city attorney's agenda, it's the council's agenda. We are all elected to represent the public and I think that we should amend that now and go the other way. And this may seem like a departure, but I think every council member has the right to make a request to place an item on the agenda that will then be considered by all the members of this council. If it doesn't work, we can always change the policy, but at this point in time, it's kind of holding down some of the council members. I'd request the city council to change that policy. And therefore, you want an item on the agenda, you notify the city clerk who prepares the agenda or the city manager who has to direct the staff to get the background information and that it be agendized at each council member's request. Discussion, please.
You know, I'm completely fine with that. I don't feel that any of us up here are going to throw 10, 15, 20 items on the agenda. I hope that that would not happen or be the case and that we don't overwhelm our staff with just, you know, requests that don't make sense. A lot of things that we have questions on can be answered by staff and doesn't necessarily have to be up here on the dais. If it needs to have council discussion, then it needs to be put on the agenda. It needs to come before the entire council and have staff's input on it in a public setting. So I'm fine with rescinding the previous policy. I would just ask that the council take careful consideration when asking that something be agendized, that it be something that needs full council discussion and is not something that can be addressed with a question to a member of staff, staff level.
Good, good comments. Any other council members?
I don't remember the last time somebody asked to agendize something that I didn't go along with, so I, you know, I don't feel we need this policy any longer. But Doug, is there a, is there a problem with things coming to you at the last minute that are difficult to get posted?
Yes, we do have a process that we go through right now. The staff's items are due to the city clerk actually tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM for the meeting in two weeks. We would not hold you necessarily to that schedule because for you to put something on the agenda once this policy is rescinded, assuming it is tonight, it's simply a form document that Ms. Bates would simply type the subject matter in. There wouldn't be any work done prior to it coming to the board. So it's a very simple item. You'll be given a schedule, it'll probably be, I would think, a week in advance. So if you were to get it to Carol Lee or myself, I don't want to, you know, burn that in stone right now, but somewhere along those lines. If you got it to us a week ahead of the meeting, it would make that meeting, otherwise it would make the next regularly scheduled meeting.
And I don't remember that we have ever asked to agendize an action item. What we've normally asked to agendize is a discussion of something-
Discussion.
-or a staff report on something, but the council can have the discussion first and then ask for a staff.
Of course. I am confident that the council is going to be careful. We're all cognizant of how busy the staff is. We don't want to put them in a situation to cause embarrassment for them, the council or the city. But sometimes because of the Brown Act, we have items where we cannot discuss, items of interest with each other. We're prohibited from doing that unless it's agendized. And sometimes we need to agendize items just for a discussion with no staff input, no data, no nothing. And then after a discussion with the council members, then we can determine if we want council or staff to proceed or not. It may be agendized again with staff backup or staff report. But it's worth trying. We seem to be working very well. We all understand how busy the staff is, but there are a lot of discussions we would like to have, but currently the Brown Act, not Jerry Brown, Ralph M. Brown, keeps us from having. So I think it's a good idea-
We need a motion. Need a motion?
Yes, we should have a motion on that. And for clarification, I would assume that still the city manager obviously also has the ability to put things on the agenda as necessary for the course of business and I would hope that I can put things on the agenda too when litigation matters come up.
Okay. That's a given, yes.
That would be included in the motion.
I'd make that motion and that would be included in it, yeah. That we rescind that policy.
Okay.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem McEchrin. Mayor Cox, may I get a vote from you?
I voted.
Oh, okay, it's not showing up on my screen. Is it a yes? I am assuming-
It is a yes vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item 4, Christian Gunter employment contract.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, we did a recruitment this past fall, really, I guess, starting in October, went out to multiple publications, including the local newspaper, jobs available, and our California Parks and Recreation Society, which is the leading organization for parks and recreation professionals. We had a committee of three senior staff members who interviewed the candidates and ultimately selected the current acting director, Christian Gunter. So that's the recommendation. I apologize for not putting hard dollars in the fiscal impact. There is an N/A and it does in the body talk about the fact that there's no impact because his pay is essentially the same as he's making now. We'll make that more clear in the future. The reason for a contract that I'm recommending, recommending a contract for director level positions is for many years, there's been some question as to whether or not our department head positions are at-will positions. They should be, they need to be at-will positions. However, every employee of the city, including myself and Mr. Metzler, have been through a probationary period, which is one of the determining factors as to whether or not you're at-will. If you're an at-will employee, you don't have a probationary period because you can be terminated, quote, "at-will." So that's why I've recommended and the two other directors that we have on staff are under a contract, to make that very clear, that it is now an at-will position. The other question I know that came up two weeks ago, and I apologize, my shoulder surgery got rescheduled. I'm getting better, but it is slow. Anyway, getting back to the item, the other directors have a severance of six months, just like this position would have a severance of six months. There was a question about whether or not you budget for that severance, for that potential liability, and that is not the norm to go ahead and budget for it. If you ever have to exercise that option, typically what would be done is you would leave the position open so long as you needed that budget to cover it and someone else would have to fill in. So I'm here to answer any questions you may have about the contract or about the recruitment.
Are there any questions from council members or comments? The last council meeting, I indicated that, I read from the contract indicating that the particular employee would receive the same, employee shall be eligible for the same employee benefits as a regular full-time employee. The city has said benefits exist from time to time. I realize there are some constraints on regular employees as opposed to at-will employees. It's, I have read cases where at-will employees may be terminated. I have read cases where at-will employees cannot be terminated. So, you know, because of the right that they have to unemployment without due process and all the things that go along with that. In fact, I think there was a recent case. I was concerned that if we have department heads who have contracts and we don't have assistant department heads, we're granting a sizable benefit to one group of employees over the other. If we have assistant department heads, what about managers? What about the rest of the employees? We send a clear message that we're not treating the employees the same. That's my concern. It's always been my concern. It'll always be my concern. But I understand, and more and more, department heads are becoming at-will employees with severance pay. I understand that. That's becoming the norm for cities. So if there are no other questions or comments from the council members, chair is ready for a motion.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEchrin, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
The next item on the agenda is, consultant professional service agreement, Green Tree Boulevard Decision Project Award of- Agreement for Final Design to DUC and Engineering. Are there any questions of staff? Questions of staff?
Mr. Mayor, can I interrupt you for just a moment? There is one page in your agenda that I'd like to draw your attention to. Because this item was, and I believe the page is, if I recall from our meeting yesterday, is 211. It's actually on the screen behind us. And Brandon, if you can put it on the TVs while I begin to talk here. There was a question a couple of meetings ago about the, what I call a railroad bridge. It's the Yucca Loma-Green Tree Extension. It's the missing piece to this corridor. With Apple Valley building the Yucca Loma Bridge, when will we be able to, we as a valley, be able to build the last bridge, which would actually connect it to Green Tree and ultimately out to the freeway? And there was a question about the loan of Measure I funds, and there was a question about when we might possibly be able to put that bridge in. Just to give you some quick background, Measure I requires that the city of Victorville use development impact fees from developers to pay for that, their share, our share of that bridge. Right now, I've heard estimates of 20 to 25 to maybe even more million dollars for that bridge. So when might we be able to do that? If you look at your screen, it goes through the total construction cost for the La Mesa and Esquali interchange. The council entered into a loan agreement whereby we put down $10 million of road diff to pay for La Mesa and Esquali. There's an additional $11.9 million owed that is currently being withheld from our Measure I revenues. Staff estimates, based on the assumptions at the bottom, of 3% growth, that sometime around spring of 2016, or about two years from now, maybe two-plus years from now, we'll start receiving those Measure I maintenance dollars again. At that point, and in fact, starting this year, in fact, any road development impact fees that we collect, after July 1st, we send those dollars to Sandbag. Sandbag then returns the exact same amount to us instead of as diff as the Measure I maintenance dollars that we're currently forgiving. So we will receive some maintenance monies, however much we send them in diff, beginning this year. Beginning in spring of 2016, because we do have some maintenance issues around the city, as we're well aware of, we will actually start getting all the maintenance dollars we used to get, plus any of the diff that we collect will come back to us as maintenance dollars until such time as that $11.9 million loan is repaid. Based on the same growth of 3%, that's estimated to be approximately 12 years from now, so about 2026 is the first time that whomever is on the city council and staff at that point would start to be able to save money to put toward any other road diff project, which includes that bridge. So I just wanted to put that out there. I know that it's been a big question as to when we might possibly be able to put that bridge in. I am confident that Apple Valley and people in Spring Valley Lake would really like that bridge sometime before 2026. So I have committed to Frank Robinson, the town manager of Apple Valley, that we will work with them. They came very close to getting a Tiger grant last year, he believes. And my goal would be to go back to Washington, D.C. with them in probably late April, early May, to show some solidarity of the valley, maybe bring a council member or two so that the Department of Transportation and our representatives can see that we do need this. We don't have a funding source in place, and this is a perfect chance for the federal government to help us out, to complete this project. With that, I'll let you get back to your item.
Yeah, if I'm here, I'll make that motion in 2026. This is, this has, this subject is in for a lot more discussion. Because Apple Valley has issued the contract to start building the bridge across the river that will intersect with the road bordering Spring Valley Lake on the north. They didn't have much of a choice, the way that bonds and the sale of bonds and the commitment of funds are, but I have been receiving a lot of inquiry lately, verbally and on the phone, about when did Victorville decide we were going to build the road? Victorville didn't decide that. It was decided by the county of San Bernardino in 1972, when they decided to build Spring Valley Lake. And the contractor was required to put up a sizable deposit for his share of the road, and things moved forward. All of the property on the north side of Spring Valley Lake was in the county. All the property to the northeast side going into Apple Valley was in the county. And all the property northwest, coming across the railroad tracks and the code road area was in the county. There was no requirement for the city to save money, plan for the money, or put up any money for years. That is part of our adopted master plan of streets now, and so Apple Valley is looking for Victorville to be cooperative. We have been in a horrible recession, and we borrowed future money so we could go ahead and build the Esquali interchange. And for some reason, people are having an exceedingly difficult time understanding that we do not have the money. And so when I'm being pressed, are we going to bid? When are we going to award the bid? Can we count on the road being built within the next five years? All I say is, all I can say is that we're going to move forward with the engineering, I hope. We got to be prepared. We're going to cooperate as best we can and utilize our federal representatives to try to obtain a grant. You know, we don't know if it's possible. We hope so. It'll be to the benefit of all the traffic in the valley if we can do so. But we are not working against it. We are not holding out. We're doing the best we can. But it's like the family wanting to buy a new car and not having the money. You don't spend money you don't have, and we cannot make that commitment at this time. But we're working on it. Any comments from the council members or questions of staff?
I think it's worth mentioning, it's in the staff report, that we have currently invested about $8.3 million in that project, including this three that's going into the design phase. So, I mean, we've put up a significant amount of money. There just isn't any more, and we don't get to print it in the back room.
Maybe we could get the governor to have a speed train from Apple Valley to reach No more questions, then this would be a recommendation of the staff that the city award the consultant professional service provider agreement to DUC and Engineering in the amount not to exceed $2,898,125.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item B6, Assistant City Manager Keith Metzler has requested that he make a verbal presentation on that item, and we also have an individual requesting to speak on that item from the audience. I am going to have Mr. Metzler give a presentation. If there are, then we'll have this individual, I'm sorry, is it Lynette Lutz? Yvette, I'm sorry. I will call on you then after that, and then we'll have council discussion. Mr. Metzler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, and thank you for the opportunity for allowing me to put this item on the agenda. And I'm particularly pleased to be able to at least share with you a little bit about the NSP program, because quite candidly, it's been several years since we originally applied for the money, actually received two large grant awards, and those grant awards date back to 2008 and 2011. And over the years, we've actually been able to receive $7.5 million of money. And the NSP program was largely created in the first place as an offshoot and a supplement to the CDBG program, which you're all very familiar with. It's our Community Development Block Program, and it's an entitlement amount of money that we get every year. We actually have to go through a competitive process where we have to ensure that the monies are spent locally to serve public benefit to low and moderate income-type households. So with that, federal government started in 2008, and it was really in immediate response to what was believed to be the next financial crisis, which we all have been experiencing over the years. And really, what the federal government was intending to do with the award of these funds and the approval of the National Housing and Economic Recovery Act was to try to eliminate and arrest the potential for blight, and the expansion of blight, both in the physical and economic sense, in your neighborhoods. And absent the federal resource, communities at the time were concerned that, in fact, there weren't adequate resources to try to at least protect against those types of blights. And in the worst of senses is certainly the physical. And as we've experienced in redevelopment, physical blight can spread, like the plague, and take over and run down communities. So one of the things that was foreseen in the wisdom of this federal program was to try to get monies in the communities and try to help suspend arrest and cause for reinvestment in communities and promote affordable homeownership. I felt, I have felt over the years that staff has very successfully accomplished the goals that we had set out in the original amendments to our action plans. And we've had to amend our CDBG action plans to allow for the receipt and the eventual expenditures of these funds. And in doing so, we actually had to demonstrate how we were going to do that. And we've actually, we actually identified six or seven different programs to where we would take the money and not focusing it in certain areas, but using it for different types of programs that address different purposes. Most classic example, and one of the items that we'll speak to, is a single-family acquisition, rehab, and resale program. But one other project that was identified and the monies were spent on was an acquisition, rehab, and resale program for multifamily. And we identified one of the most blighted of apartment communities in Victorville. It was generally at Village Drive and Mojave Drive. It was not only blighted physically, but it was socioeconomic blight. You had a lot of instances of drugs and gang activity. So we were able to identify that, and we actually used NSP money as one of the funding sources to help eventually acquire that property, get it rehab substantially, and get it in the very presentable condition that it is today. So we feel like we've been successful in that regard. One of the other programs that has been getting the greatest of question and maybe even scrutiny as of late, and it's perhaps because we haven't given you the overviews over the period of time that's elapsed, because we've gotten so used to just bringing you the items and believing that you remember what happened, or what our decisions or what our motivations were three and four years ago, is the acquisition, rehab, and resale for single-family homes. And when we applied for the funding, we had to identify where we were going to concentrate our efforts. And certainly, it wasn't something that we were intending citywide. In fact, we identified specific target areas. And those target areas, before defining what they were, they were actually census-driven, and they were actually driven based upon statistics. And there were some factors of statistic that actually helped score certain target areas better than others. Particularly, we were looking at measures, in some cases, of areas that had high concentrations of foreclosures or high concentrations of underwater mortgages, for lack of a better description, high-risk mortgages, I think is what they called them. So we were able to identify those target areas, and we've been able to focus our energy in identifying foreclosed homes, or, as the program was amended, short-sale opportunities. And the goal in the program was to be able to step in, buy the homes at the appraised value, certainly couldn't purchase them for less or more, had that obligation to buy at the appraised value, but also allowed us to take control immediately as opposed to having to wait for the property to continue through an extended process of getting either an investor or even another resident homeowner in there. We've been allowed to go in there and address the physical conditions that have prevented it from getting it sold quickly. And some of those physical conditions include everything from the replacement of windows because they've all been broken up and boarded up, basically. We find houses that have no HVACs, no heating units, no air conditioning units, electrical, drywall. I mean, some of these homes that we acquire, even though from street level, they might look like they're decent homes, when you unmask them, open the doors, you know, we're inheriting some that are disastrous, that can actually become imposing upon a buyer to come in and not only buy it, but make the necessary investment to get that home looking in a suitable condition for the neighborhood. So effectively, it's intended to try to preserve the community, but also promote homeownership within the community. A lot of question has been raised over the last few weeks as to the process that we go through. And it's not a program that we're spending all of our time pursuing. In fact, we've worked very closely with, we've actually invited the realty community, we've actually invited the mortgage community to be a part of the program. Particularly with the realty community, we've actually invited them to make them aware of the program, how it works, what are some of our criteria in terms of buying these properties before we even consider buying these properties. So we get approached by those that are familiar with the program, that have gone through our selection process. And then, once a property is identified, we'll actually go to the property, we'll do a preliminary assessment using city staff, we'll actually do an assessment to determine to what extent we think the physical improvements are going to be necessary. We'll actually factor that with the acquisition price to determine whether or not it's feasible for us to pursue it. And if we determine it's feasible, we'll actually close on the property. And then eventually, as we close on the property, we're going out for the public bidding process to actually do the rehab. So once the rehab is done, then certainly we enlist the group of brokers that we've, or realtors, I should say, that we've worked with. There's a pool of about 11 that we routinely work with, and we rotate it through and make those properties available at affordable, to affordable households for sale.
Thank you, Mr. Metzler. I think you give every reason why the city council needs to have a study session and we acquaint ourselves with the NSP program to determine if we want to continue in it and whether or not we want to adopt policies as it affects it. It's a very complicated program. It's been very successful. From the staff's point of view, they have carried out the council policy. I read the documents that have been adopted in the past. I think the staff has done a good job from that concern. But I think it requires a discussion by this current council, none of which were involved in this program when it first began, and probably not really as familiar with it as I am. And I think that council really needs to have a discussion on that. Before we go to the council, Yvette, would you like to comment to the council? You have a card here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm a real estate broker in the city of Victorville, and I've seen what these properties done, especially to first-time homebuyers. They move into a pristine, brand-new home, better than brand-new, being energy-efficient, going green, tankless water heaters. And what was not available to the first-time homebuyers is now available to them without the fierce competition of investors that would not have fixed up this home in even half the manner as what the city of Victorville does by going green. I've seen, by walking up to the property, the neighbors, the block, just start improving because of what the city has done for this one home. Pride of ownership comes back to the community, to the block. And it's just been a great program that I really believe in, and I think it's great for the first-time homebuyers, for a new family or a family that otherwise couldn't afford a home, now is establishing themselves in Victorville as a homeowner and taking pride in their neighborhood and their city. And I just feel this is a great benefit for this community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Mayor, can I just add a quick follow-up? We appreciate your comments. I think there's been some confusion on staff's part that it felt like you were unhappy with the work they were doing, and I'm thankful that you're acknowledging that they're implementing the goals of a past city council, and perhaps the goals of this council would be different. If the council would like us to schedule a meeting at some point in the future, we'd be happy to do it. I think Mr. Metzler is prepared to go through the options that are before you, if you would like to hear them tonight.
No.
Leave that up to you.
I would like to have items agendized so we have time to study and look at them and ask for data. To drop it on us when we're sitting here trying to make a decision when we haven't heard it or seen it before is unacceptable.
I would like to pose a question. I have voted, I think, for every NSP decision we've made in the last three years. But my recollection, with the exception of that apartment project, is that there were always houses that we were buying for $40,000, $50,000. They were in really bad neighborhoods, tough neighborhoods, where we might spend $30,000 or $40,000 to bring it up from a house that nobody wanted to a house that we hoped somebody would want, with the hope that it would improve. would want, with the hope that it would improve pride of ownership and the entire neighborhood. What's throwing me a little bit here is that that's not what these houses are. These are higher-end, in fact, you know, $140,000, $150,000, $170,000, that's not a low-income home in this community. That's pretty middle-income. And I'm just wondering, have we changed our strategy for how we're using this program? Because at this level, it just doesn't make sense to me. At lower prices, it did, but here, it just doesn't.
The strategy hasn't changed. I think we've got houses all over the city. It's probably something that would be most appropriate at the workshop session that the mayor would like. But just to add to that, I mean, it's a good question. And one of the things that has occurred, because, and that might have been the appearance that we were buying when the program first started, homes that were $100,000, and some of our first acquisitions were back in 2009, and they were smaller units and probably were in fact around that price range. The market has changed. You know, the market has improved in terms of value. So, of course, some of the ones that we're seeing now, of course, are more reflective of what current conditions are. Effectoidly, if that's a word, when we looked at, you know, what we've spent on these properties, it's, on average, just over $100,000. Of course, right now, we're at a period of time where we're buying properties that are, you know, at the higher end of the spectrum right now, but that's really more a reflection of the market. The goals haven't changed, the program hasn't changed. You know, one of the things that might be appropriate in the workshop setting is to perhaps identify what we've done and if the market has changed, recognize perhaps we want a more focused approach to spending these monies. So, those are things that we can all discuss. One of the things that I wanted to at least share with the council is that, you know, we have been operating relying on, you know, previous approvals, previous directions. And quite honestly, we've been given a lot of latitude as staff to do things such as exercising purchase and sale agreements. And notwithstanding this discussion tonight, we will set up a workshop and get more comprehensive. But in that meantime, you know, we do have projects that are underway that have purchase and sale agreements in place that we've signed. So, we're going to have to continue some of the business that we've already started, otherwise we, you know, subject ourselves potentially to some breach of contract issues. So, we'd like to continue in that regard, given the approvals that we've had, with the understanding that very soon, we're going to come back and try to identify not only, you know, the benefits, but if the market has changed, perhaps where we should be focusing some of our interests and maybe even put in some more requirements in terms of procedure. I'm going right now through a transition in my organization, so I've actually been able to get more involved in this. And there's even some mechanical things that I see that I'd like to address and change to make it a little bit more bulletproof. But with that, I think, having said that, what I don't want this council to do is resulting from this discussion, is probably this meeting, as you've got a couple of other items on the agenda. I certainly expect at the next meeting, you're going to have a couple more. We still have some business to conduct, so I'd at least ask for that latitude to continue to complete out some of the business. And then, of course, with respect to any new business, we'll make that a function of getting further council direction, if you so desire.
The item that's, the next item on the agenda is a request for the city council to buy a house at, I think it's $136,000, $139,000. I went out and looked at the house, and directly across the street, there is a foreclosure. To the north, four houses down, there is a foreclosure. At the end of the street, there is a foreclosure. And 25% of all the yards are dead where people are living there. To try to convince me that the city paying this price for this house and fixing it up is going to change the neighborhood, you've got to be drinking something. Looking for funds to get rid of the burned houses, and I found out that the NSP money is available for that. That spruces up our neighborhood. You have a burned-out structure that's been there for two years, this money can be used for that. We also, I looked at the house and I recorded last week, that the request that's not on the agenda that we continued was for the acquisition of pro- by the way, I'm going to request that the council go ahead and buy the property because staff is doing exactly what the past council said to do. I want to make that clear. We had a request to buy three houses, $200,000, $200,000, and $185,000. I went out and looked at those. Four houses away from the $200,000 that we're going to buy and fix up, a house just sold for $185,000, that is fixed up. We're messing around in a free-market enterprise and not making it better. And if you do the math and you fix the house up, unless we provide additional monies, low and moderate-income families don't, how many are four, can't qualify. So now, I guess we're going to put money up for the low and moderate-income family. And so, the guy next door that just bought the house and is working to pay for it, has to take money to give to the federal government, to give to the person that couldn't afford to buy the house? We need to talk about this. And in that neighborhood, there is nothing rundown about that neighborhood. It is one of the newer houses, I think they were built three or four years ago. They look great. There are more deadlines from people who live there than there are from the houses that are not there. So, we need to discuss this. If it's a council's decision that it's okay to spend $200,000 for a house, $40,000 to fix it up in a neighborhood that's selling the same house for much less than that, that's fine. It's a council decision, this is a democratic process. But the policies established by the past city council, I think, are really misdirected, and I think they need the city council to relook at these. I'd be more than happy to take any councilman on the tour and show you every one of these houses that they're looking at and have purchased. And I think that is more telling than anything. On the other hand, if you read all the data that the staff has given us that says that if we don't proceed, we lose the money or we stand to lose the money, I'm not going to raise an issue at the last minute so that we lose the money. I think that things have changed. When I talked to Mr. Metzler, he indicated a past council policy, he gave me a copy of it, I read it, staff is following it to a T. But I'm betting that's not the same policy this council, in fact, based upon some discussions that I've heard, I know it's not. So, staff is caught in the catch-22. Do we need to help low and moderate-income individuals? Absolutely. Can we help in different ways? Absolutely. Can we fix up houses? Can we double glass? Absolutely. Can we, more efficient heating and air conditioning units? Absolutely. But I really question buying a house in a neighborhood that's not rundown for this amount of money and fixing it up when it doesn't qualify. We need to stop. And we need to look at where we're going. Decision of this council to continue in that direction, that's what the democratic process does, but I'll vote against it.
Well, keep one thing in mind, we wouldn't be doing any of this if the federal government wasn't funding this entire project. And we have this tendency, it's widespread. Well, it's not coming out of my pocket, it's coming out of the federal government's pocket, so it's not really- but where do you think the federal government gets their money to fiddle away on things? I'm not sure I'm for this thing or against it, but I'm bothered by the fact that the city of Victorville isn't participating in the real estate market. That makes me very uncomfortable. I don't mind being at the bottom end, dealing with property that people, nobody wants, in the hopes of making it something somebody wants, but I agree. My concern, what can we stop now? Where can we stop at this moment without committing ourselves to any losses?
Well, I think certainly the ones that we have on now, you're dealing with one that has actually already closed, you're ratifying our approval, you're also approving rehabs. I think there's three or four more that we're expecting at the next council meeting that were really the product of the last council meeting, but because of the way the staff reports worded, I want to reword it.
There are two we're rehabbing that I think we already have bought tonight.
Yeah, if we're rehabbing them, they would have been bought.
One, we're making a buy decision.
So, let me just say it this way, as far as anything that's not in the pipeline, I can put a stop to anything that's not in the pipeline. But I think we have an obligation to at least fulfill what's in the pipeline, which means either we've acquired it, or we're in escrow, or we've just signed purchase and sale agreements. And just so you know, you know, in the case where we've actually put, where we've actually purchased the properties, you'll see subsequent items because then we'll have to go through the bidding process for the rehab, and then we've got to get your approval to actually award the contract. So, there'll still be some follow-up, but what I can do is make sure, and I'm looking to see if anybody's got a problem with it, but I can say we stop with anything that's not in the pipeline.
No, we decide where we want to go.
Correct.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I would just ask, if we're going to have a workshop study session on this issue, that staff provide us with, you know, breakdown of what's occurred from day one of decisions that have been made by this council, properties that have been purchased, rehabbed, what they sold for, who was involved in the transactions. I know there's been questions as to, you know, the city's using one particular real estate broker or another, I don't believe that that's been going on. But I think, you know, it needs to be a part of the discussion because it has been a policy that I know I've been a part of, I know Mr. Kennedy's been a part of. We have made decisions to support this program over the years. And, you know, if we're going to go a different route, then that needs to be discussed at the council level. And staff giving clear direction, again, I think staff's been doing exactly what the council has told them to do, they shouldn't be chastised for doing that, they've just been working in the direction the council gave them.
I would go to, as far as to say that when the federal government visioned the program, when repossession first began, I believe that they really felt that in order to keep this block or neighborhood from going downhill, that you purchase it the day that it's repossessed, that's what being used in the NSP program, and therefore, it wasn't intended to sit on the market so that the house would be subject to vandalism and broken windows and rundown. Because it's pretty discouraging for neighbors who are working to keep their house looking good and their yards looking good, to see a house sitting next door. But when you have four houses on the same block and we're only buying one, it's a pretty, it's an indication that everything has changed. No one had visioned the hundreds of houses that they were going to repossess. And it's not even remotely possible that we could buy all of those to keep that neighborhood from going downhill. And we do have neighborhoods and we have a lot of programs that we could assist in either making them more effective against heat and cold, use of energy, double glass, double paint, insulation, tearing down houses that are eyesore in the neighborhood. We haven't discussed that. And without that discussion, staff is moving ahead with all the policies that have been adopted by the council, and probably I would have never looked at this if I wasn't aware of the cost of the houses and what the houses were selling in the same neighborhood that we were buying it. And that struck me as so odd that I began to look at the whole thing. And I will be very honest, at first, I thought staff is just, what's going on here? And then, when you read all the documentation, they're working very diligently, very hard, very professionally to follow the rules that the past council set down. Well, if the current council agrees with that, great. But we need to sit down and make ourselves responsible by reading the information and determining what we believe after we get input from those neighborhoods and the general public, then give direction to staff, and then we have no question about what they're going to do at that point. The item actually before you at this point in time is agenda item number seven. This is a new item, the continued item for the request to purchase three houses, did not get on the agenda, although it was continued, it'll be at the next agenda. This house, project cost is $139,000, it's a short sale, or less than that, but when you add it all together, it comes up to that. And then, of course, there'll be an addition for, it'll be another request to rehab the house once you own it, and we've purchased other houses. So, the action before the city council is to approve a recommendation of the staff to buy this piece of property that is identified as agenda item number seven on your agenda.
I believe it's, is it seven?
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem McEckern, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number eight. This is the same program, this is an award of a contract to rehab one of the houses that was previously purchased for $34,420. We have it, we might as well fix it.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilmember Garcia, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number nine. This is also to fix a house at 13785 Angeles Drive, project cost estimated $39,884. Again, it's a house that's previously been purchased under the NSP program.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem McEckern, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 10. It's a request the city council appoint two councilmembers to serve with staff on the Community Development Block Grant CDBG Review Program. I believe last year, it was Ms. Garcia and Ms. Vias, is that correct? I make a motion that the same two individuals-
I make a motion that Kennedy and Cox sit on that committee.
I have clients that apply for these CDBG grants, I just can't do it.
Really?
You have to do it. We depend upon you.
VBWA services those clients.
Well, normally, I don't make motions, but in this case, I would make the motion that the two members previously appointed continue and have done a good job, and thank you for your service, and if you're willing to do that, I'll make the motion. Okay, Jim Kennedy made the motion. That's okay.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Pro Tem McEckern. Motion carries unanimously.
That was the last agendized item, if I'm reading this correct, but we have, at this point in time, we have the public comment on items of an interest to the public. I have received one card. Teresa, and I'm sorry, I can't pronounce the last name, Castrion? Come up, please, and pull the microphone down where you can speak into it.
My name is Teresa Castrion, and I want to talk to you about, I need help for this situation. Okay, I have a property I want to buy for another property of fence, and the city's not letting me, I don't know if I make this aware. I don't know what's going on.
Okay.
I can explain better.
Can I explain for her? She's kind of-
Big hit of the microphone.
Is it okay if I explain it for her, since she's having issues?
Well, yeah, sure, absolutely.
She bought a property, when was it? In 2009, for the next door, it's a commercial property for her business. She had to pay for a surveyor to come out and tell her what her property was because the next door is a bar. They're tenants, but they're not the owners, and they keep trying to tell her that that's not her property. Parking in her property to a point where we've had so many problems with them, their clients are even coming over and harassing us of how many issues we're having with them. It's to a point where we've come to the city to get a permit to put up at least, to try and put up a chain-link fence, but I guess we're not allowed to put chain-link anymore. So, we want to put the bollards. But it's getting so intense that the client, their clients are getting involved in this situation, they're harassing us, they're harassing anybody who comes over and tries to take measurements. It's getting really out of hand. I mean, we brought the surveyor map that shows exactly what is hers and what is theirs. We've even talked to the owner of the property, and he says, "We have to deal with the tenants because it's an issue between us and them." And we've already explained it to their clients that it has nothing to do with them, if they can please just step out of it, but it's gotten out of hand. Now, we don't know what we can do, but every time we've come into the city, the guy keeps saying that, she keeps complaining, but we don't know what she's complaining about. We're not going over there, we're not messing, we're not doing anything with them, basically. We've already tried to handle it mutually, but they just don't want to hear it anymore.
The items where the individuals speak to the council regarding items of interest to the public prohibits the city council from engaging in a dialogue simply because if it's not agendized. Had the item been agendized, there may have been other people. So, I- Had the item been agendized, there may have been other people, such as the property owners next door. Since it's not agendized, we don't get involved in that conversation, but we do have staff members sitting in the back who have heard your complaint, and before you leave, they will contact you to direct you to the right individuals to get a process where you will at least get an answer. It might not be the one you want, but you will be listened to, and they will assist you where they can.
Is there something, at least we can have help, because seriously, it's getting out of hand that their clients are coming over and harassing us constantly.
That's, that's what, you can address that with our staff--
And they keep throwing in our faces that they have friends of the city, friends--
Address that with the staff, and--
Yes.
And at some point in time, if you feel that you want this matter agendized, you call the city and request that it be put on the agenda, or request to talk to Doug Robertson, who's the city manager, but in the meantime, when you leave, there'll be a staff member stop you in the back of the room and talk to you--
All right.
--about this issue. I have no other cards for individuals that want to address the public comment section. There is an individual with his hand up. If you would come forward, please, come up to the microphone and give your name, and then you're free to speak for three minutes.
Thank you very much. I left my card up here earlier, sorry. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Robertson for very graciously meeting with me yesterday. There was no resolve, but that's why I'm here, I want to talk to you guys a little bit about this sign and banner and cleaning up the whole city thing.
Can we get your name and address for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Gina Chaberrin, and I have a center on Bear Valley Road and 11th that is 15632 and 15610. As I built this center, the economy took a tumble, and I couldn't lease out spaces. Henceforth, I created a tenant, being a gym, simply to salvage my operation, and it's been okay. Recently, the whole sign banner thing, I've been asked to remove my banners back in November of last year. I did so. The city has, what I'm going to say, my honest opinion is, the city's like walking around with a ten-ounce steak hanging out of its mouth, and they're not getting everybody at the same time. In the gym business, January is the make-or-break month. I am down almost sixty percent from last year. There are other gyms on the old Costco building, they are flying banners that are behemoth, make mine look like postage stamp, and they're still up. We're already in February. I've been down since November of last year. It has created such an unfair competition, it is literally killing my business. Also, Home Depot, Lowe's, these guys cover the front of their stores with banners, they are right now, displays, I've been asked to remove mine, I took them down, yet Home Depot and Lowe's still have their stuff. They have it up there for a reason. It works. I've done radio, direct mailing, every form of advertisement. The cover of the Penny Saver brought me a little bit of business, not much. My banner's been what has been bringing in my business. I have a marquee, it does nothing, nobody looks at those things. I really think that you guys should really rethink this. I don't want to fight with the city. Believe me, if I could pick up my business and move out of Victorville tomorrow, I would have done it yesterday. I'm very, very upset at the way things are and the way things are going, and I don't know what else to do. My patio business, you drive down Bear Valley Road, and you look in the left and see Victorville, and it looks very, very clean, not to me, it looks sterile. You look to the right, you see a sperry, you see flags, banners, you see people--
I don't want you to feel like picking on you, but your time is up.
It is my opinion, yeah.
No, your time is up.
Oh, okay.
Everybody's given three minutes.
Well, thank you, guys.
We, again, it's not an agendized item, it's nothing that we talk about, but we did agendize at one time, we talked about code enforcement in the city of Victorville, which was lacking. It was a council policy for staff to begin the code enforcement. We have gotten good feedback and, positive feedback and negative feedback, I won't say good and bad, and the city council is dealing with that, because we made a determination a long time ago, if we have ordinances of laws on the books, we are not going to turn our head. We either change it or we enforce it, and that's where we're still at, and we're still getting public input, and we thank you for your input, and it'll be considered with all the other comments we receive. Thank you. Anyone else want to address the council on this item? I have no more cards. Did we get your card, sir, or did you leave it there? Okay, thank you, we'll pick it up. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is discussion and possible action regarding items for upcoming council agenda. We don't need to discuss that, because the city council may do that directly, unless there's a reason to discuss it, for any council member. Next item, E3, is a report from the city manager, if there are any.
Staff has no additional comments at this time.
Staff has none, reports from the council members. McEckern, none? Ms. Pius? Mr. Kennedy? None. I have none. That concludes this meeting, and I won't see this council until 7:30 in the morning. This concludes the meeting. Thank you for coming. Good night, everyone, and remember, if you didn't get these answers here, contact us, we will have someone respond to you. Thank you.